Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Trustees' Public Meeting for November 12th, 2024. I would like to call the meeting to order. Monica, can you please take the roll call of trustees to confirm a quorum?
Yes.
Trustees, when I say your name, please state your, if you're present, if you're here. Chair Chen.
Present.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Present.
Trustee Chaudry.
Present.
Trustee Keller.
Present.
Trustee Moore.
Present.
Trustee Pastroni.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Stanton Batrom.
Present.
Trustee Tumanello.
Present.
Trustee Uvila.
Present.
Chair Chen, all the trustees are present and you have a form.
Thank you, Monica. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Monica, will you please take the vote?
Trustees, when I call your name, please state your vote. Chair Chen.
Approved.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Approved.
Trustee Chaudry.
Approved.
Trustee Keller.
Approved.
Trustee Moore.
Approved.
Trustee Pastroni.
Approved.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Approved.
Trustee Stanton Batrom.
Approved.
Trustee Tumanello.
Approved.
Trustee Uvila.
Approved.
Chair Chen, the motion passes.
Thank you, Monica. Before we hear the sabbatical report from Dr. Mayhill, I would like to make a few comments. In light of what is happening in our country, I would like to draw your attention to the mission and vision statements at the top of the agenda shown on the slide screen. This board is committed to supporting the needs of our diverse community to create an engaged and inclusive society. This board has been built with diversity in mind to serve all students and staff. The board continues to fully support the president's implementation of the college's mission and vision of diversity and inclusion. Moving on to board business, this afternoon, we have the pleasure of hearing a report from another faculty member who was on sabbatical this last academic year. Dr. Lindsay, would you like to invite Dr. Milner to introduce the faculty presenter?
Absolutely. Good evening, Dr. Lindsay. Good evening to the board. And I'd like to start out by thanking the board for giving our faculty time on your very busy agenda to share their sabbatical experiences with you all. Tim Mayhill is a tenured assistant professor in the English Department in the School of Liberal Arts. Professor Mayhill has been an extraordinary faculty member at Anna Rundle Community Colleges for the, Community College for the last nine years. Professor Mayhill sabbatical focuses on the creation and implementation of the Center for Liberal Arts Work, CLAW. You've heard this term before. The CLAW supports the college's institutional goal of engagement and entry by creating programming that relies on the common intellectual experiences and engaging the college with the community through participation and community events. The goal of retention and completion will be supported by building cohesive communities of learning and cohorts around central questions and transformative texts and by connecting programming with student coursework. The CLAW will also foster a growth mindset for the college and community as the yearly question will evolve to meet the concerns and demands of the community. The funding for the CLAW is being provided by a $250,000 grant from the Teagle Foundation's Cornerstone Integrated Liberal Arts Certificate Program. So without further ado, Mr. Mayhill, please.
Thank you, Dr. Milner. I will, as ever, try to live up to the introduction you provide. No promises. And thank you, Dr. Lindsay, and the board for being willing to hear about the CLAW for two months in a row now. A quick reminder is that the CLAW is a three-part initiative, like Dr. Milner referenced, that depends on the engagement of students, faculty, and the community and is funded by that quarter-million-dollar grant from the Teagle Foundation. Really, at the heart of this is building on Dean Elijah Morse's BLAST program in that with the CLAW, we want to provide students with a seminar-based coherent pathway through their Gen Ed classes that contextualizes their education through our big question that allows them to make connections across courses. We want them to find interdisciplinary answers. We want them to come in with cohorts and to build that sense of community. Through that big question that guides all CLAW inquiry, we want students to make those connections across their coursework that often students make those connections in Week 15 or Week 13, when they realize, oh, my Shakespeare class has a lot to do with my sociology class. And we'd love for them to make those connections on day one, when they know that going in with their big question. This also gives our students access to transformative text pedagogy, to seminar-based pedagogy, to high-impact practices that often at four-year institutions, these are gated behind full-time residency requirements, they're gated behind tuition, and they aren't available at open-access institutions. And that's something we feel really strongly about. It gives our students a smaller experience, a more intimate experience, an experience where they know their colleagues, where they know their faculty. And I adored my time, and I did my undergrad at Washington College, and I would love for that experience for our students. I would love it more if that experience weren't gated behind a $56,000 a year tuition. Exactly to what you spoke to Chair Chen, like, this is something for our students and that I think we owe our students. So, that's highfalutin', but really what that looks like for, over the course of CLAW programming, students take 12 credits. That's three credits of their CLAW courses that fit into their existing Gen Ed programming. Then, so this loads into any degree program that students are already taking at the college. This isn't something extra. This is something that just is a different modality and a different way for them to experience their education. Then, they get to take a capstone course. And what this capstone seminar is, where they complete a portfolio of work. They look back on the work that they've been doing. They look back on previous answers they came to with the realization that, like so many of us when we reread something, oh, you didn't see it that way before. And that's an awesome experience because it puts students in that active role in their education where they become authors of their own education and their own educational experience. They realize that they are in control of that development of self and that that's really what we're able to provide for them. With that letter of recognition, where we hope that leads to strength for partnerships so that students can't just get into schools and students aren't just accepted with their credits, but then those places that were too much of a reach, that they couldn't afford before, now they have scholarships. Now they have that ability to take a portfolio of work to that group and say, this is what I've done, this is who I am, this is my role, and this is what my college did for me, and this is what I can do at your college. So they come in as juniors with that ready to go. Because making that affordable to them, it's great to promise them the world, but if we don't deliver it, I think we've probably done something wrong. So, what this will look like for a student is, they walk in their first day and they end up in a seminar class, probably by accident, whether it's their gateway course, whether it's my English 101 class or Professor Tenenbaum's Psych 111. But they're stuck. And then they realize that, oh, this is a different experience, that this is a different pedagogy, that this is the classroom experience that I come to expect at the college. Then, because they love it, which they will, we're going to make them love it. It's a threat. Or a prom, I'm sorry, I said, promise. Promise, thank you, Dr. Milner. But then, they can follow those seminar tags across their Gen Ed coursework. They can, they take those nine credits, they can take more than those credits because they realize this is an experience that works for me, this is something I like. Then they see those same students, they see those same students and those, they see the same faculty, they get their one-on-one advising with the faculty, and they get that smaller, more intimate experience. Even if they don't continue with CLAW coursework, even if then they don't finish the capstone, what it becomes is that this, their first experience here, their first experience with us, is an active one and is an engaged one. Because really, at the heart of this, it's, we think it's important, we think it's really crucial to this programming, that our students start here by default. This isn't a program that they have to be nominated for, this isn't an honors program, this isn't a program that's gated behind a GPA requirement. This is about equity, this is about access for our students, that this is happening in their first class, their second class at the college. And this isn't a student selecting in because they know they'll be good at it, but this is a student who ends up in a class and that realizes that this is good for me. So what this, because I'm, you can see how often I PowerPoint. It's a, never. This is the second PowerPoint I've made at the college, apologies. This wasn't a rhetorical point to make about the virtues of that. It was really how bad I am at it. Thank you for your support, for your validation of this work. I can only reiterate Candace's invitation to seminar. We are holding one, open to the community, after 12th Night, which you're, of course, all going to. On November 20th, from 1:00 to 2:30, it's in Humanities 014. You keep following the Humanities Building until it looks like you enter the potions classroom at the back. And you can come, and when you do come, I promise you will find out that in seminar there are no innocent bystanders. We will expect you to have done the reading. Thank you.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you for your presentation. Does anyone on the board have any comments?
Yeah.
First of all, thank you for your passion and your enthusiasm. I want to take one of your classes, so look for my.
Shakespeare in the Spring.
I'll do Shakespeare.
Yeah, it'll be fun.
No. Your enthusiasm is contagious, and I can see how that benefits your students. And from the board perspective, when we agree to fund these sabbaticals, this is exactly the kind of work we're looking to see, how it affects the students and the college and the community. And I personally am delighted with your report. I can't wait to hear more about it.
Thank you.
And would you give us that November 20th?
Oh, yeah.
Time and room again?
November 20th, 1:00 to 2:30. Humanities, the Humanities Building, and it's in Room 014. If we end up needing more space, we'll just jump into the theater.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you for, oh, I'm sorry, no.
That's all right, that's fine. My hand went up late because I was following.
I appreciate it. No, exactly, yeah. It's going to catch up and finish in about an hour.
I just wanted to say that, thank you very much for educating the entire person, not by course, not by credit. And yes, courses and credits and programs and matriculation are all terribly important, but the whole person, and that's really wonderful.
I think, like, that's our role as a community college, is that we can't just be about credits and transfer. We're here for the community, and Dr. Lindsay always says it, and I think it's important that we live up to that.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. You're welcome to stay where you can go. Okay, moving on, we're now on the consent agenda. Dr. Lindsay, would you like to read the main motion for the board?
Let the board approve the consent agenda as listed in front of you.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Monica, will you please take the vote?
Yes, trustees, when I call your name, please state your vote. Chair Chen.
Approved.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Approved.
Chair Cho, or Chair, Trustee Chaudry.
Approved.
Trustee Keller.
Approved.
Trustee Moore.
Approved.
Trustee Pastroni.
Approved.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Approved.
Trustee Stanton Batrom.
Approved.
Trustee Tumanello.
Approved.
And Trustee Uvila.
Approved.
Chair Chen, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Now we will move on to the committee reports. First is Vice Chair Price Jones for the Audit and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. The Board Audit and Finance Committee met via Zoom on October 9th, 2024, to discuss the following topics: presentation from the auditors on the fiscal year 2024 audit, the FY 2025 financial status report, and future meetings. The primary purpose of the meeting was to discuss the FY 2024 audit report that is in tonight's agenda for acceptance. The Board of Trustees have, has been provided the college's FY 2024 audited financial statements as prepared by college management and audited by Clifton-Larson Allen LLP. The meeting started with Mrs. Christina Bowman, principal from the Clifton-Larson Allen LLP, presenting the results of the FY 2024 financial statement audit and status of the financial, of the federal grants audit. The auditors issued an unmodified or clean opinion with no audit adjustments on the financial statements. Mrs. Bowman stated that the auditors did not encounter any difficulties in the completion of their work and that all requested documentation and reports were available upon request. She complimented the management team on their preparation. During the meeting and after the discussion via email, the committee was made aware of an item noted in detail on pages 81 through 83 of the Uniform Guidance Report, also known as the Grants Audit, that required a response from the college. As noted in the report and shared via the email with the Board of Trustees, the administration has already addressed the issue. The item is minor in scope and does not impact the college's ability to grant financial aid, nor does it result in repayment of any funds. After the audit presentation, the committee discussed the FY 2024 operating budget status report as of September 30th, 2024, and the anticipated annual results, noting the college is operating within its existing resources. Vice President Beadmore noted that this report is updated throughout the year, and with the Audit and Finance Committee's work generally completed in the fall, future reports will be provided to the Budget Committee. Last, the committee discussed future meetings and noted that, noted this is the last scheduled meeting for the Audit and Finance Committee, unless a special meeting is requested. This concludes my report, Madam Chair, and I'd be happy to answer any questions before it is turned over to Dr. Lindsay to read the motion.
Are there any questions from the board? Dr. Lindsay?
Okay. The Board of Trustees accepts the college's fiscal year 2024 financial statements audited by Clifton-Larson Allen LLP, based on the recommendations of the Board of Trustees Audit and Finance Committee.
Is there a motion to accept the college's FY 2024 financial statements audited by Clifton-Larson and Allen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, primarily for the newer trustees, when you read an audit report like this, the closest thing to an attaboy you're going to get is adequate. They, they're not very effusive when they go through that, that report. And you probably heard the comments made by the partner of the firm was pretty, pretty complimentary. We didn't see that in the audit report at all. And that's just standard. I've been reading audit reports for the last over 50 years, and this is, this is about as good as you're going to get. So I compliment our staff on getting the attaboys they got, and, and thank you very much for the diligence that they provide.
Thank you, Trustee Uvila. Any other comments from the board? Discussion?
I just want to say that, I think every year we have, like, really good report. Last year when I was, there was really good comments all the time we're getting it. So this is a really good achievement that we are, and that.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Seems like a lot of compliments. So, hearing no more, Monica, would you please take the vote?
Yes, trustees, when I call your name, could you please state your vote? Chair Chen.
Approved.
Vice Chair Price Jones.
Approved.
Trustee Chaudry.
Approved.
Trustee Keller.
Approved.
Trustee Moore.
Approved.
Trustee Pastroni.
Approved.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Approved.
Trustee Stanton Batrom. Trustee Tumanello.
Approved.
Trustee Uvila.
Approved.
Chair Chen, the motion passes.
Thank you, Monica. Next is Trustee Chaudry for the Board Development Committee report.
Thanks. Thanks. The Board of Trustees had their annual retreat on Tuesday, October 29. The retreat was facilitated by Dr. Debbie Thomas, a consultant from the Association of Community College Trustees and a former community college president. At the retreat, the board discussed many topics, including the role and the responsibilities of a trustee member, governance versus administration, and effective communication. The retreat was a wonderful way for the trustee to connect, get to know our new member, and learn the best practices for effective board governance. And I, at the end, I really appreciate everyone who joined this retreat, and we learn a lot. Honestly, we talk, we learn a lot, and this, this is a wonderful, I think, start, I think every year, we will, we're planning to have every year. Yes, so that's, this concludes my report. Any questions?
Any questions for Trustee Chaudry? Thank you very much. Next, we have the Board Policy Oversight Committee report. Vice Chair Price Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When October 30th, oh, on October 30th, Trustee Moore and Vice Chair Price Jones, as members of the Policy Committee, met to discuss reviewing specific board policies considered at the board's annual retreat on October 29. The discussion focused on steps to streamline current policies and improve the board's process for reviewing and approving new or amended policies to strengthen the board's governance framework. The committee, on November 11th, met to review one interim policy action request, interim protection of personal identification information policy, and discuss the overview of the policy development process. Changes to the state law require that each public institution of higher education develop and adopt a policy establishing appropriate remedies for individuals whose personal identifiable information has been affected by a breach. While the college has information technology requirements that address privacy, it does not have a board-approved policy. Unless there are any objections, the committee recommends that the board chair delegate the authority to the president to create this interim policy to comply with state law. At the meeting, the committee also decided to meet monthly, moving forward, to continue discussions and policies reviews. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, great. Now we move on next to the Budget Committee report. Trustee Moore.
Good evening. The Board Budget Committee met via Zoom on November 8th and discussed the following topics: update from the county budget officer, fiscal year 2025 update, and the fiscal year 2026 budget preliminary guiding principles and base assumptions. The committee also discussed future meetings. First, the committee welcomed senior policy advisor to the county executive and budget officer Chris Trumbauer for an update from the county. Mr. Trumbauer expressed the county's pride and continued support for the Community College and his gratitude for the positive working relationship with the administration. He specifically acknowledged the strength of the budget team at the college. He mentioned that it is still very early in the process, with county revenue projections not expected until December. However, he met with us to ensure that there is an open door for collaboration throughout the development of the fiscal year 2026 budget. Mr. Trumbauer is anticipating limited uncommitted revenues in the county's fiscal year 2026 budget. The committee discussed the challenges this creates, given the state funding reduction to the college in fiscal year 2025. The committee thanked him for his time and continued support for the college, and we look forward to our continued collaboration. Next, the committee received the fiscal year 2025 operating budget projection as of October 31st. These are very early results, but the projections show a balanced budget with tuition and fee revenue projected above budget due to increased fall enrollment. Always good news. The college is projecting that all functional expenditure areas will remain within the budgeted amounts. However, the report noted that the plant operations and maintenance expenditure category, increasing utility rates are projected to exceed the utility budget with staffing turnover and contemporary salaries, pardon me, and temporary, not contemporary, temporary salary savings offsetting these cores, these costs. Okay, maybe I've read too much. This will need to be monitored and may result in the need for an appropriation authority transfer from other functional areas as the year progresses. The committee also discussed the importance of managing the Tuition Stabilization Fund fund balance, which will be analyzed in more detail during the fiscal year 2026 budget development process. The college will continue to monitor enrollment and expenditures to ensure a balanced budget. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Moore? Okay, great. Hearing none, we're going to now move on to the AACC Foundation report. I am pleased to announce that Trustee Chaudry will be stepping into the role of the AACC Foundation liaison. Thank you, Trustee Chaudry, for stepping up to the plate and taking on the important role of maintaining the valuable relationship the Board of Trustees has with the foundation. I know both boards are excited to welcome you in that capacity. Before he provides his report, I would like to ask Trustee Keller to read a student donor letter.
Dear donor, I'd like to thank you for the Baltimore International College Educational Foundational Scholarship. Their scholarship will help me pay for my courses in culinary and pastry arts. These funds allow me to focus on school and help alleviate some of my financial burdens as I pursue my degree. I recently moved to Maryland from New York City, and I will say, since becoming a student at AACC, I have never felt so welcomed and comfortable. I absolutely love my fellow culinary students, and the instructors are also amazing. Their passion for the arts is unmatched, and as an adult student, it makes learning a lot easier. I appreciate all the support I receive in and out of the classroom from the instructors as well as fellow students. I am very proud to be a part of the AACC community. The support of the Baltimore International College Education Foundation has made a significant difference in my life, and I am truly grateful. I am committed to making the most of my scholarship and using it to achieve my academic and career goals. Thank you for your belief in me, scholarship recipient.
Thank you, Trustee Keller. And now, Trustee Chaudry, the AACC Foundation liaison, report.
Sure, thank you. Fundraising, fundraising update. As of October 30, 2024, the AACC Foundation's fundraising total is just over $733,000 in gifts and commitment. The foundation is grateful to the generous donor who have given to date this fiscal year. The foundation is raising funds for three key initiatives this year. First one is nursing scholarships. Philanthropic gifts for scholarship that facilitate enrollment in the registered, registered nursing program. To date, the foundation has raised $156,000 for this initiative. Second initiative is a help link for nursing, funding for student emergency assistance. To date, the foundation has raised $60,000 to provide this important funding for students in need. And third one is workforce development scholarship, the scholarship assistance for student who wish to enter AACC workforce development program, providing support for both credit and non-credit program. To date, the foundation has raised $52,000 for workforce development scholarship. And the last one is fund, foundation activities. In my new role as a leader trustee liaison, I look forward to participating in my first AACC Foundation Board of Directors meeting on Wednesday, November 20th. At the end, I just want to say, this is amazing role, and is really happy to see how we are helping, how the foundation is helping the students and the college. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Chaudry. Thank you, trustee Shadri. Any questions for the trustee? Okay, we're moving on. And now trustee Moore, I'm so excited to hear this, will provide us with an update on the ACCT Leadership Congress that was held October 22 through 26. Trustee Moore is a member of the ACCT DEI Committee, and we are pleased to have her serve in this role at the national level.
Thank you, Chair Chen. On October 22nd through the 24th, 2024, along with Dr. Lindsay, Elizabeth Apple, and Monica Rousa, I attended the ACCT Conference in Seattle, Washington. I'm a member, as Chair Chen just stated, of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that is part of ACCT. The main purpose of the meeting we held was to meet with legal counsel to discuss the implications of DEI across the country. Several states have enacted legislation that requires all references to DEI work be eliminated in colleges or risk the elimination of state funding. The discussion revolved mainly about how the DEI committee can support these colleges without placing them in financial jeopardy. I would like to thank the college for allowing me to be part of this important committee. On October the 24th, Dr. Lindsay, Elizabeth Apple, and I presented a session about the nursing program. And Dr. Lindsay will address this further in her report, but I will say we were awesome.
And humble.
And humble. Especially Elizabeth Apple, who did the bulk of the presentation, so thank you very much, Elizabeth. But it would, we had, anyway, Dawn will further elaborate on this one. A special thank you to Monica Rousa for her support during this session. We couldn't have done it without you. The sessions I attended were primarily focused on DEI work, since that is my work on, with ACCT. I also attended a session on orientation of new trustees. This session had some innovative ideas that I believe our college can learn from, and I'm anxious to share more about that. I'm also the voting delegate from our college and attended both regional and national business meetings. I would like to encourage my colleagues on this board to consider attending an ACCT conference. There were multiple community colleges there from Maryland, and the ones that were there had multiple trustees attending. So, next year, don't leave me lonesome here, okay? It's a great opportunity to learn from your peers and network with other trustees. I've made friends there throughout the years that I know now from across the country, and it's great. At your seat, you will find a paper with a QR code that will give you an opportunity to participate in a quick survey, not related to the conference, so don't think you had to attend that, from ACCT. Please take a minute to scan the QR code, not now, but later, and respond. It's, it's important to the work of ACCT. Thank you, and this concludes my report. Oh, I skipped the last page of the budget report? I did not. Apparently, I did. Did you? I guess I did. Well, you know, I always have to keep this interesting.
That'll appear on your review.
That's what I'm afraid of.
That's what she's planning for.
Okay, so if I can pull that up.
Do you need a paper copy?
Yeah, if you have a paper copy, that would be great. I printed it, but apparently I didn't print the second page.
Right here.
Thank you. So, to continue my budget report. Didn't you miss me last month? I know you did. So, to continue my budget report, the committee received an update on the Moody's rating process. As you know, the ACC Foundation issued bonds, issued bonds to construct the Anarundel Mills Building and the Moody's rates. And the Moody's rates, those bonds, so investors have a sense of the ability to repay the debt. The administration participated in a call late in October as part of the evalu, annual surveillance process and participated in, participates in receiving the results of that update later this month. Finally, the committee reviewed and provided feedback on the preliminary guiding principles and base assumptions, which will guide the development of the college's FY 2026 budget. The committee's next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December the 5th. This finally concludes my report.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about the last page of the budget report or the ACCT report from trustee Moore? Thank you. And I would like to echo trustee Moore's comment about attending ACCT next year, so please let me know if, if you're interested. Okay, moving on to the president's report. Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you very much. Dr. Milner and I had the opportunity to attend the League for Innovation Fall Board Meeting at Sinclair Community College in Dayton, Ohio, October 15th through 17th, receiving updates and focus on the League of Innovation Strategic Plan. As Sandy mentioned, we were together having a wonderful time at 8:00 in the morning, thinking nobody was going to come to our session, and every seat almost was filled. So, congratulations to the work of Dean Apple and her team and being with us to answer the tough questions. It was a wonderful morning. On October 29th, the college hosted the Anarundel County Public Schools High School Principals at the Annual Principal's Breakfast to talk about the President's Opportunity Scholarship. Each principal gets to nominate one student who demonstrates tenacity and dedication for a scholarship. This program is also generously funded by AACC Foundation, and Mary's welting and Candace with your project, I think. On October the 30th, Volly and I had the opportunity to attend the Community Foundation of Anarundel County Celebration of Philanthropic Awards. The foundation collaborated with the University of Maryland Baltimore Washington Medical Center and Lunas Health Anarundel Medical Center Foundation to nominate Ethel Gro Webster-Williams. Trust for the Legacy Award for Planned Giving is a generous gift from each of the institutions to support healthcare services, education, and resources for our community. Moving on to accolades, I'm proud to announce the Anarundel Community College was ranked number three in the nation by Intelligent of the Best Community Colleges of 2025. The rankings were determined by things such as U.S. News and World Report, the data from the U.S. Department of Education School Card, and other national statistics. I'm incredibly proud of our faculty and our staff for continuously making our college in the top. I'm also pleased to share that AAC's women's soccer team is on its way to the national tournaments. This past weekend, yay! This past weekend, they won the East District and will travel to Huntsville, Alabama to compete with the best 12 Division II teams in the country. The games begin on Sunday, November the 17th. Tanya, do you know if they're going to be, can we log in? Do you know if we're going to be able to watch it? We've done that in the past. I remember watching one of the games on Mother's Day. Was it lacrosse game? Also, in recognition of Veterans Appreciation and Native American Heritage Month, AAC is celebrating our veterans November 14th through the 16th to recognize the sacrifices and contributions of veterans and their families. On November 7th, the college held its annual Veterans Appreciation Ceremony at the Veterans Memorial Garden. It is a beautiful tribute concluding with our tradition of reading the names of faculty, staff, family members, and veteran students who have either served or who will be serving in the military. As the community college, we have benefited from the service of our veterans and military in so many ways. We are committed to providing support to our active military learners, veterans, and their families as they achieve their educational goals, and we are grateful for their service to our country. AAC is also celebrating Native American Heritage Month. The Trexel Library Team has curated resources and content to highlight Native American history and culture. And that concludes my report. Then we'll move on to our enrollment update. Dr. Patterson will be presenting, sharing with the board where we are from an enrollment perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Good evening. So tonight, I am presenting the Fall 2024 Enrollment Report. And just a reminder, this is our credit enrollment, so this slide shows our fall, total fall credit enrollment. As a reminder, the head count represents the actual number of students enrolled in credit courses. So it's important to note that this data is as of our census dates, of our official census date, that's September 28th. Happy to report that we've had an increase in head count of 2.9%. So, the fall head count of 11,481 represents an increase of 323 students. And then we also look at enrollment by FTE. So the FTE of 3,045 represents an increase of 80 FTE over Fall '23, or 2.6%. And just a reminder of FTE, that's the sum of credits for all enrolled students divided by 30 credits. So, 30 credits is what's considered a full-time load in a year. This next sort of busy slide, we're looking at the trend of new and returning students in each fall term. We try to look at a 10-year or so trend, so from 2015 to 2024. In 2024, there are 8,358 returning students. Those are students who have attended AAC at some time prior to Fall '24. That's on the blue bar, and that's compared to 2023. And you'll see an increase of 6.5% or 513 students. And then on the orange section of the graph, we have 3,123 new students at AAC this fall. And new students are considered students who have not previously attended AAC. So, slight decline there of 190 students. Then if we're looking at our student body by age, if you start at the bottom, you'll see the under-18 age group represented by the green line at 14.5%. You hear a little bit more later in the presentation about our dual enrollment students, which is reflected in this data. And then 18 to 19-year-olds are seen on the gold line at 25.5%. 20 to 24 is on the red line at 27.9%. And then 25-plus are at 32.5%. You don't see it here, but 30 to 39-year-old is 11%, and then 40 and over is 11.5%. So, just a little bit more about that breakdown. This fall, 74, 74% of our students attend part-time. You'll see that on the orange line. And then on the blue line, 26% of our students are attending, did I say full-time? 70 would be great if 74% were attending. Not sure what I said, but, okay, good. I was wishful thinking. On the blue line, 26% attended full-time. That's pretty consistent with previous years. Our students are taking an average of 7.9 or so credits, so tend to see that year after year. You continue to see the ratio of male to female enrollment is pretty consistent. 37.9% of our students this fall are male compared to 62.1% female. Again, we see that trend nationally, but we do think there's some opportunity here for us to take a look at our male student enrollment numbers. Perhaps we can impact those. And looking at our demographics, we see 47.9% of our credit students identify as non-white. That's on the orange line. And then the blue line shows 4,946 of our students this fall are classified as minority. Again, those are self-reported students who are reporting that they are either Asian, Black, African-American, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, Native American, Alaska Native, or other multiracial. And that percentage is based on all credit students minus non-US citizens. So, those who did not report a race or ethnicity as well. And that's the MHEC IPEDS definition that we use. This next slide shows the breakdown of enrollment by credit. Students by race, ethnicity, starting at the top, 46.8% students are, I'm sorry, 46.8% are white students on the purple. Black, African-American, 19.2% on the gold. Unknown is 16.6%, that's on the blue. 12.9% is on the green, Hispanic-Latino, and then Asian is 4.4% on the orange. You see some changes there. I don't know if we've shown this slide in a while, but this is the breakdown by race relative to Anarundel County demographics. So, pretty consistent, what we tend to see throughout the county, but I wanted to show that to you. So I haven't looked at that in a while, but consistent with our mission as well. This next slide is the students taking at least one online course in the fall. So the orange line shows 56.9% of our students taking at least one online course, or 6,531 students. And then if we look at hybrid, see that the orange line shows 16.4% of our students taking at least one hybrid course, or 1,885 students. This next slide is looking at where our students are coming from, so kind of by zip code. So this helps us know if we have some opportunity in various places. If you start at kind of the top at noon, the 895 and the 631 are both zip, are both Glenn Burney zip codes. Then if we move clockwise, Pasadena is the 1,218. Arnold is, I'm sorry, let me do Severna Park first. Severna Park is 545. Arnold is 563. Annapolis is the 504. If you swing around west, Crofton is 580. Odenton is 623, and then Severn is the 610 there. And we're looking at our retention fall to fall. That's remained pretty consistent. Gone down a little bit, coming back up hopefully. We're at 60.7%. And then also, similar for spring retention rate has been pretty consistent at 73.9%. So now I want to do that pull-out, a little bit of information on dual enrollment, being that we've done the Blueprint Legislation, and Cassandra Moore, who's our Director of Enrollment Development and Admissions, is going to do these next few slides and a couple of videos.
Good evening. This is slide is of high school students who are duly enrolled at AAC. You will note an increase in Fall 2024 of early college access duly enrolled students. 1,690 students are in the Early College Access Program, an increase of 195 students, or 13%. And we have experienced a decline in other duly enrolled students of 328, or 83%. Other duly enrolled students include non-Anarundel County Public School students, home instruction, and private schools. And so we see a change in these enrollments in terms of financial support legislated by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Overall, we have 133 fewer duly enrolled students this fall. The next slide is of the draw rate. These are our recent high school graduates from Anarundel County Public Schools who are attending Anarundel Community College. For Fall 2024, you'll see our draw rate of 21.9%, just slightly behind last year's fall percentage of 22.1%. And this is a preliminary number that we will finalize when the students actually graduate. Oops, didn't mean to go there. A little trigger happy here. There we go. There we go. Don't want to forget this slide. We pay a lot of attention to this slide in admissions. This is enrollment by county high schools. And admissions works very closely, and a lot of us in this room are working very closely with high school counselors so that their students can take advantage of early college participation and the supports in place to aid their success. In collaboration with Anarundel County Public Schools, we are conducting information sessions in the high schools, weekly virtual ECAP or Early College Access Program slash Dually Enrollment Information Sessions, weekly drop-in, student drop-in hours, serving on their integrated community stakeholders teams, which are focused on having business people and other people from the community who are providing co-curricular and other supports to students in the high schools based on their signature. And we also conduct personal enrollment sessions, which is an opportunity to meet with an admission officer to select and register for classes based on their career and personal interest. Okay, we went the wrong direction. There we go. There we go, the right direction. Every year, the college hosts a counselor's conference to promote early college participation by highlighting new majors, programs, and resources supporting their student success. Please listen as one of our students shares her experience as an ECAP student, followed by a second video featuring our faculty, which is available to students, parents, and school counselors, and you, if you'd like to see them.
Hi, my name is Farsh Verma. I'm here to talk to you about the Early College Access Program, or ECAP, an amazing program at AAC that allows you to get a jumpstart on college credits while you're still in high school. I started with ECAP in the summer after my junior year. By the time I graduated high school, I had already completed the equivalent of one full semester of college. ECAP has a lot of benefits. Besides earning early college credits, in college classes, you're treated as Besides earning early college credits, in college classes, you're treated as an adult, which I thought was really cool. I became more self-reliant, learned to communicate with professors, and developed leadership skills. It will give you the chance to see what the world outside of high school is like, with a much wider variety of people. And if you're not sure what you'd like to study in college, you can use ECAP as an opportunity to explore. My first ECAP class was Introduction to Business. And now I'm a full-time AAC student pursuing an Associate of Science degree in Business Administration. My advice to you, first, start with one class so you can focus on being successful. Remember that college classes require more work and study time than high school classes do. For each course, plan on about six hours of study time per week outside of class meetings. Second, connect with your academic advisor. Be open about what you'd like to explore. Tell them your strengths and weaknesses so they can help you find the best class or connect you with resources like tutoring if you need it. Third, get involved. You may feel like a high school student, but you're also now a college student. ECAP students have access to all of the activities and resources that the college offers. I'm a Student Ambassador and Vice President of Public Relations for the Student Government Association. Student engagement is fun and a great way to make friends, but it also teaches you leadership, networking, and open stores that you didn't even know existed. Lastly, come to the campus whenever you can. Everyone here is so friendly, and there's always events going on with food and games. AAC is really all about community, and ECAP is a great way to explore what college is all about. For more information, please visit AAC.edu/ECAP or email.
Okay, we'll just cut it off so we can be in the right place. I hate when all those other things pop up from YouTube, so we're gonna stop that. We're gonna get in front of that, and maybe I'm a little trigger happy, but I can't stand it. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Dr. Lori Perez, Assistant Dean of Social Sciences, Philosophy, and Interdisciplinary Studies. We're so excited that you'll be joining us here at AAC. I want to talk to you about faculty expectations as you prepare to transition from high school to college. But first, I want you to take a minute and think back to who you were in eighth grade. Do you remember how nervous or excited you felt when you were getting ready to start high school? I bet you've changed a lot since then. Think about all the ways that high school is different from middle school. Your transition to college will be similar. There will be some things that are the same, but a lot of things are going to be different. Let's start with the basics. I'm sure you've heard a little bit about how college is different from high school, but here are some specifics. On the first day of class, your college professor will provide you with a syllabus. A syllabus is a document that lays out expectations, deadlines, grading policies, and attendance requirements. Did you know that if you review the syllabus and don't think the course is a good fit, you can drop the course within the first few days without any negative impact on your college transcript? In college, deadlines are firm. And if you need an extension, it's best to talk to a professor before an assignment is due rather than after. Be sure to review your professor's late work policy in the syllabus and their communication methods so you know how to best reach out to him or her. There's no such thing as a redo or good faith effort grade in college. Many of your professors may have never even heard of these terms. There's also no such thing as an excused absence. Each of your professors will have their own attendance policy written in their syllabus. If you must miss class, make sure you refer back to that policy and reach out to your professor so they know you'll be absent. While we're on the topic of absences, did you know that your high school calendar is different from the AAC calendar? That's right, we have different rules for snow days, different class start dates, and different days off. If you have the day off at your high school, that doesn't mean you have the day off in your college class. Be sure to check the syllabus for the course meeting requirements. What about homework and study time? College requires significantly more study time and out-of-class work than high school. Homework isn't always very clearly defined, and it may require sharpening those reading and study skills. The good news is that here at AAC, you'll find faculty who want to help and the resources to assist you. Establishing a good relationship with your professor early on is one way to have a positive impact on your college's success. Finally, have you ever heard of office hours? Office hours are a time that your professor sets aside just for you. These may be virtual or in-person, but they are a great way to drop in for extra help, clarification on an assignment, or even just say a quick hello. If your professor's office hours don't work for your schedule, don't worry. Talk to your professor about setting up a time that works for both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I able to ask a quick question? On the slide that has the ECAP and the other duly enrolled categories, what falls into the other duly enrolled? And the rise in the ECAP, is that just because they got better at promoting?
The other are, oh, I'm sorry. I can talk louder. No, no, non-ECAP, these are non-Anaronda County Public School students. These are home instruction students and students who are attending private schools.
Understood, thank you.
And then you ask a second question.
Well, the rise of the number of ECAP students, is that because the program became better known? Or?
Well, blueprint funding for, the blueprint funding from the State General Assembly was very helpful.
Okay, check, got it, thank you. Any other?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Whenever I look at these reports, I always have a different view on this one. On your Slide 137, almost 85% of your students, sorry, excuse me, they are like more than 18s. Do we have any kind of study to find out how these students are coming to college? Are they taking the public transportation or bus? And maybe there is opportunity, we can see, well, there is one student here coming to school, taking like two, three hours. Maybe we can work on some kind of legislation or something to get the bus earlier or something that can speed up. And the other question I have is, these all numbers are grades. But I'm not getting the point, which category is improving? Like, you know, is our nursing category, is, I mean, is driving these numbers? Or which category is improving? These are the two questions I have.
First question. We have an occasion, met with the county and talked about transportation. We've talked about changing the bus routes. We've done a bit of studying to see how students are getting here. I think we haven't done that in some time, but at the same time, we have a number of students who are taking more of their classes online. So we're now probably about 50/50. Certainly something that we could look at again. It does come up, you know, probably every five years or so. So something we could certainly talk about a bit more. Your second question, I'm trying to see if I have that in front of me with.
Sure, you probably have the answer right off the top of your head.
Transfer studies is usually our most highly enrolled program. And then the next are nursing, business administration, and psychology. Yes, that's where we've seen the greatest growth in nursing. We just expanded the program. We did that intentionally, from 80 students to 160. But again, business administration, psychology, and some of our tech programs have been the ones where we're seeing the greatest growth.
Thank you. And we increased this strength, do you think so we need to increase more or that is enough?
Oh, we can always increase more.
If you get more and more, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, any other? I know.
Yes, please. On your slide, that's our book, page 149. It shows the draw rate of the AACPS graduates attending AAC. What is draw rate? Help me understand that, please.
Let me get you the, hold on one side, second, let me go back to that slide. One moment. One moment, please. Here is the draw rate slide. It is coming, please be patient. It's gonna be the last slide I go to. Okay. So it's students who, so we have recent high school graduates. And that's the, let me look at it. That's the 1,232 recent high school graduates. And then how many of those students that we're bringing to AAC? So there's a percentage that is the 21.9% rate. So we include students who have graduated between July of '23 and then June of '24.
So it's basically our yield of the number of students in that class of graduates.
Thank you very much.
Recent high school graduates. Yeah, recent high school graduates.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes, Jim.
I just have a question anecdotally as a new trustee. Have you seen that virtual classes help retention? Or does, back to your question about transportation and access to the college, just curious about what experiences lead to retention versus what may cause a child? And I know a child, a young adult, there are also different life circumstances that students will face that can also impact retention, because retention is, you know, fall to fall or fall to spring. But I'm just curious, post-COVID, has virtual helped retention?
Yeah, I think it's easier to say that virtual helps with access. Retention, there's so many factors that would play into retention that it's probably a little bit harder to say that because a student was able to take their classes online that they retained. It's, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we have any data specifically related to that, that we parse it out in that way.
Yeah, we have some data based on student success rates. And for us, student success rates means earned an A, B, or C. So when we look at the average, about 85% of the students show greater success in face-to-face courses, 77% in our online courses. And then we break down our online courses based on whether they're synchronous or asynchronous, right? Asynchronous is they kind of work at their own pace during the course. Synchronous means sort of a hybrid between being online, but you have to show up at a specific time as you would if you came to a face-to-face. And believe it or not, our async students do better than our students who have to show up sometime online at the same time as the teacher and the rest of the students. And those are in the 70s.
And I think generally, if you, I think what we do know is, obviously, you have to have success to persist. And you have to persist to retain. So we certainly know those things have an impact.
Thank you, I appreciate that distinction between access and retention.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Lindsay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Giving a strategic plan update, Monica Ross, a Special Assistant to the President.
So it's my pleasure to update the board about the college's strategic plan, Engagement Matters II, Excellence Through Innovation, and highlight the work that our faculty and staff are doing to support student success. The college's strategic plan supports our vision, mission, and values. The college has centered equity as a priority. In the past two strategic plans, Engagement Matters, Pathways to Completion, which was fiscal year 2017 to 2020, and our current plan, Engagement Matters II, Excellence Through Innovation, with a focus on completion and student success. For our new trustees, and this will be a refresher for the previous ones, the board approves the goals, objectives, and strategic activities of our strategic plan. And a copy of our current strategic plan was included in your board materials, and it's also in the Resource Center in Diligent, in case you want to look at it anytime. It's also on our website, it is everywhere, our strategic plan. There are three goals to our plan, entry and engagement, progress and growth, and retention and completion. There's four objectives, excellence, engagement, innovation, and resources. And how we achieve our goals are through our strategic activities, and those are the bullets on this list under each objective, which you can't see on there, but you can in all the materials that we provided for you. So how do we measure our key, or how do we measure the progress? And that's through our key performance indicators. We have 40 KPIs to help measure our progress towards achieving our goals and objectives. And the board also approves those KPIs, which reflect the efforts at the unit and department level to support the strategic plan. I always love presenting in November after Dr. Patterson, because she essentially presents all of the KPIs that we update each fall, such as credit headcount, dual enrollment, which Cassandra talked about, enrollments in online classes, retention. And in September, in the annual, I'm gonna say this, it's a long one, Maryland Higher Education Commission Performance Accountability Report, a lot of our KPIs are included in there. So you've reviewed it, you've reviewed it, we reviewed it, approved it, listened to Dr. Patterson, and I'm just gonna share a couple. So we talked about, I think trustee Pastroni led this in really well, about course success rate. So one of our KPIs in progress and growth, under the objective of excellence, is the overall course success rate, which is the percentage of credit students in which students receive AC or higher. So when we presented to the board in May, we shared with the board the course success rate for the fall term. That was 74%, and it was the highest it had been over the past five years. The spring overall course success rate has remained constant around 76%, but notice the increase in the number of grades as well. And also, last May, we gave you a steep peak of the completion numbers in May. And now you can see we got the official numbers in, and we show an increase in the awards as well. Sorry about that. So our current strategic plan ends this fiscal year, June 30, 2025. So while we are continuously working on the activities that support our goals of engagement and entry, progress and growth, and retention and completion, we have also started the planning for our new four-year plan. We are in the process of reviewing environmental scans, reports, and data, looking at trends on the national, regional, local, and county level. We've had our initial brainstorming sessions with the president's cabinet and the Strategic Planning Council, which is comprised of representatives from each constituency group. And we've asked them to envision the best-case scenario for the college or the worst-case scenario. What are our strengths, what are our challenges, what's working and what's not working? If you come to my office, you will literally see the hundreds of Post-it notes of what people, Dr. Chen knows, right? She's seen there. So now that was the start. So now this month, we're gonna start getting input from the college community. And we're gonna host Riverhawks roundtables. And we're gonna have these facilitated exercises and engagement activities to seek feedback from faculty, staff, and students. And I also went to the conference and got lots of ideas about how to engage the board in the planning process as well, so stay tuned. So I kind of want to talk a little bit about the timeline. This December and January, we're gonna be doing the first draft of the plan with the input that we received from these Riverhawk roundtables, and then also from the Strategic Planning Council. And then what we will do is present that to SBC, or the Strategic Planning Council, in January. Then we're gonna go on the road and kind of show and share our draft with the college community in open forums, and again, seek their input and their feedback. And then in April, the Strategic Planning Council will endorse the final draft for the board's approval. And we will be presenting that to the board in May as an information item, and June as an action item, because this plan will be effective July 1st. So that's kind of a summary of the activities that we're working on right now. So any questions? All right, thank you.
Monica and the team, it was so fun. It was just so much fun when we were putting stickers on the walls and getting running into people. And it was just, I don't know, reinforcing, it just, it's. It was just, I don't know, reinforcing, it was wonderful. And the leadership that Monica and her team are providing is important, and this is obviously a continuation. The strategic plan is something that we have to have, not only for you all, but for the state and others as well. But commitment to our students, commitment to diversity, a lot of things are gonna carry forward, but they're bringing a lot of really new ideas too, which I commend you for. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, up next, Andy Kim, Chair of our Academic Forum/Council.
Good evening, Board. Several meetings since the last board report, most notably meetings with leadership amongst the affinity groups. The big current business that we're dealing with now is still trying to fill a few committee vacancies. And we are also now with the endeavor of trying to track and gather information from the last seven to 10 years for committee service and find out who's doing what and where we can take advantage of opportunities there. Working with committees to update their sections of the academic forum charter to further reflect how we're currently doing business. And the ad hoc committee is mostly done, if not done, working on updating the syllabus template language. And making it accessible, because that hasn't been updated in several years. And lots of meetings scheduled for the coming month. Short and sweet. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and from our administrative staff organization, Dr. Angelo. The, I'm getting this right.
Thalassinidis.
No, no, I've got it. I'm gonna do it. Thalassinidis, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Lindsay, Board of Trustees. You have our written report, but in addition to the written report, I would like to showcase some of the great things that we're doing. On October 28th, we had the first Google Dev Fest. This is the first time that is happening in the state of Maryland. It is a Google-driven event. Google flew three speakers on the topic of AI. Dell Enterprises sent their Senior Vice President of AI Initiatives to talk about the direction that they're going down. We had 160, it was a Monday evening, we had 160 reservations, about 75 people showed up. It was a beautiful event, and hopefully we're gonna be hosting it on an annual basis. So on November 21st, you're being invited. We are hosting the Innovation Summit, and that is in collaboration with Unarrendable Economic Development, Maryland Department of Commerce, Maryland Tech Council. And we're having a beautiful panel discussion of CEOs that started their companies locally here, and they're gonna talk about the challenges and how they address those challenges growing their companies. We are also having the Senior Data Scientist from Dell, that they're gonna be here, and they're gonna talk about how AI can help with innovation and startup companies. And they're gonna be also showcasing their AI kiosk, which is a AI grounded avatar that they're going to showcase. So these things would not have been possible without the help of faculty, staff, and very importantly, facilities also that have been extremely helpful, coordinate all of those things. And from the faculty, I have to say that BS, which is Business Economics and Entrepreneurial Studies, there have been amazing to work with. And the leadership of Stephanie, Professor Stephanie Goldenberg, has been unbelievable. She has done an amazing job. So that concludes my report. Any questions? Yes?
Do you have the time and location for that event on the 21st?
I do. It's gonna be, it starts at 1:30. It finishes at 5:30 in this room. And then we're gonna have our second career fair over at Calt from 5:30 to 7:30.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo.
Thank you.
And up next, from the Professional and Support Staff Organization, Caitlin Silvery-Grom.
Hello, esteemed board members, and thank you for giving PSSO the time to speak at tonight's meeting. I'm excited to share that we have finally updated and approved of our goals for the year, and they are as follows. Number one, explore and examine opportunities for PSSO members, professional development opportunities to be supported by relevant leadership to encourage employee growth and retention. Two, explore and implement opportunities to increase PSSO member engagement, including within PSSO and college-wide committee, opportunities in support of employee professional growth, mental health, and physical well-being. And three, leverage opportunities to utilize and spotlight advances in technology effectively to meaningfully engage with professional and personal growth. Each goal has an accompanying set of objectives to ensure that we can make progress and measure our successes this year, and those objectives can be found within our written report that you all should have access to. The leadership team is really grateful to have had such an involved group within our membership as we set these goals. As you know, we were a bit delayed last month, so we were really excited to see that interest and enthusiasm in being a part of the process. Last month, the PSSO leadership team visited our members at GBTC and A Mill. We brought along with us doughnuts, hot chocolate, and coffee to usher in the fall term with our members on those campus locations. We hope that this time spent together will help to remind our members that they are a part of the organization and to help them feel included and valued in the work that PSSO does at the college. PSSO held our October and November Professional Growth Workshops. October, we focused on growth mindset with guest speaker Lisa Starkey, Assistant Director of the Center for Professional Learning. And November 7th, just last week, we held our workshop on preventing burnout and self-care focuses with Katie Keys, who is the Project Director of Sexual Violence Prevention at AACC. These workshops were offered in a hybrid capacity, ensuring that we could accommodate as many members as possible. And our next business meeting will be on November 20th, as our final business meeting of the academic year, or sorry, calendar year. I'm getting ahead of myself, aren't I? Prior to the new year. And the reason for that is because our final, final meeting of the year is December 11th, and that will be a chance for our PvP, our presidents and vice presidents, to provide their updates to our membership. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. And from our Student Government Association, Jane Blake, President.
Good afternoon, esteemed Board of Trustees and President Lindsay. I am pleased to be here today to share updates on the recent and upcoming events led by the Student Government Association, or SGA. My team has made amazing strides in fostering the campus engagement and creating meaningful opportunities for student involvement. In collaboration with the OSE, SGA recently co-hosted Cozy Cider, which was a seasonal event alongside pumpkin painting activities for students to show off their creativity. It was a big hit with apple cider, fall treats, and like other snacks and goodies. We provided a very welcoming environment for students to come and just sit back and paint and eat. We welcomed over 100 students who joined in the festive experience, which is the most we've ever done. To support students' well-being as midterms wrapped up, SGA then went on to partner with the Health and Wellness Center for a wellness event to help students de-stress and get ready for their upcoming exams. Looking forward towards the end of November and December, we're also preparing an event called Spill the Tea with SGA, which was named by your former trustee, Devin Keller. He then named the event. And this is an event where students could come and share their thoughts about how this campus is going, how activities at home are, just to de-stress and, you know, let go of some loose ends and tides. And then we will go along with an event called Stress Fest, which is an event that promotes de-stress and activities before finals and exciting other activities like yoga and like dancing, singing, all these other activities that can help. We are also excited to close off applications for new senator positions. What this basically is, is this is an event where students could join in and, you know, better their skills, leadership or communication. They could also work with me and my crew as we go around the campus and help other students. They can get the opportunity to do that. In closing, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share these updates and your ongoing support. I am excited to work with my team to create a supportive and enrichment environment for all the students here. We look forward to engaging and having a successful semester this year. And just to wrap up, once again, I would like to shout out the women's soccer team for making it that level. As a former athlete of, well, still an athlete of the school, soon to be a former athlete of school, I think I'm very proud. And I believe I'm very proud of the hard work they did put in, because, you know, when I would go to train, I would see them, they're training really, really hard, and they trained for this moment, and here they are. So just like to put that shout out for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate you on the turnout for your event. I know behind that is a lot of work to get even more people to show up, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I did want to offer, if you need a pet therapy golden retriever, I got two of them who would love to come and help you de-stress.
That'd be amazing for the de-stressing activities.
Yeah.
Okay. And next up, from the Faculty Association, President Brandy Shepherd.
Happy November. I just want to actually thank Dr. Patterson and Cassandra Moore for that report. I am a parent with two children here, two of my three children are current students right now, and they participated in the ECAP program. And I have a unique perspective now, as a faculty member, but also as a parent. And it's been incredibly impactful to have our students get on-boarded and jump-started. And so I think that if we can continue to advocate for this initiative, I think that more students are gonna be aware of what we offer as a college community. So it's been pretty impactful. So thank you, Dr. Patterson and Cassandra, for that report. It's Veterans Week. TFO acknowledges the service and sacrifice of our military personnel, past and present, to trustee Keller and anyone else in the room who has served our country. Thank you. I got to participate in the first SPC meeting along with five other faculty. I was privileged to be Dr. Lindsay's partner during that meeting, where we had to rate our challenges zero to seven. We all agree that parking is a zero, so we're good to go there. TFO just recently met this past Thursday, November 7th, in an effort to celebrate scholarly work. We plan for faculty to present their sabbatical projects at all TFO meetings this academic year. Dr. Rochelle Tannenbaum kicked off these presentations during our convocation back in October, and we heard from the Mayhills on their work with the CLAW during our November meeting. And I'm a proud member of the first cohort of the CLAW, so I'm learning a lot about seminar and Shakespeare and Machiavelli. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I build buildings for a living, so. We have more presentations forthcoming, and we'll be profiling the work from those faculty who had sabbaticals in academic year '23 and academic year '24. Top news from TFO is the current review of the shared governance policy and procedures. We had a robust and hearty discussion during our last meeting and decided to continue the conversation with our special session that was hosted today by the TFO Shared Governance Committee. The TFO will complete its review and forward recommendations to the policy action team by the closed date of the review period, which is this Friday. In moving the needle forward in our goals, TFO leadership had a productive meeting with the Associate Vice President of Learning, Dr. Tina Smith, regarding the evaluation analysis of the current equated credit system. We decided the first step is to collect data, and I'm so excited to send another survey to the faculty. I can't wait. We will work with Priya to pull that survey together. My written report outlined the work the TFO committees have been diligently pursuing, so I won't regurgitate that for you. You're welcome. I do want to take a minute to highlight how we are working towards our goal of building community. We have received a lot, a lot positive feedback on our weekly bulletin, The Monday Minute, and I can't tell you enough times that I run into my colleagues, and the very first thing they say to me is, "I love The Monday Minute." We are working to create a sense of community and connectiveness by including not only information pertinent to the TFO, but also promoting events around the campus. The Monday Minute is broken down into three sections, TFO Need to Know, Announcements, and our Acculates and Acknowledgements. And each week, we celebrate faculty or a group of faculty who are doing great things here at AACC, and I just wanted to take a moment to highlight a few of those faculty. At the start of the school year, Dr. Jackie Gambon in our education department had an amazing full-circle moment at her daughter's meet-the-teacher event, and she met her daughter Savannah's teacher, Ms. Alexa Mayo, who happens to be a graduate of AACC and Towson University and is in her first year teaching at Crofton Meadows Elementary School. She's also Savvy's third-grade teacher, and Dr. Gambon was Ms. Mayo's first education professor here at AACC. Just an awesome reconnection. Professor Stephanie Goldenberg, who's the academic chair of Entrepreneurial Studies, joined the Board of Directors for Charting Careers, a nonprofit dedicated to inspiring youth to discover the power and reach their goals through transformative mentoring, life-enriching opportunities, and family partnership, and by serving as champions for equity. Professor Goldenberg stated that charting careers is an excellent way to extend the work that she is doing here at AACC to reach potential students while they are considering their academic and career paths. She is passionate about helping others and excited to support this organization with her mentoring and marketing skills. And I must also note that she is chairing the TFO Ad hoc Committee on Faculty Mentoring. And then lastly, Professor Oksana Fisher, who is an assistant professor in our Business Administration Department, was named an honoree in the 2024 Maryland Association of CPA's Women to Watch Awards Program. She is active in the Maryland Association of CPAs, which greatly benefits our students, the Business Administration Department, the School of Business Law, and AACC as a whole. Professor Fisher strongly and effectively promotes accounting and the CPA profession to her students and elevates professionalism through her compassion, dedication, and professionalism. Professor Fisher was featured at the MACPA Women to Watch Awards breakfast back on September 26th, where she was supported by her colleagues, her assistant dean Stacy Korbleck, and her dean Karen Cook. This concludes my report. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy, I never miss reading The Monday Minute.
Thank you.
I never miss it.
Yes, and now the vice presidents are getting it too, so.
It's good stuff. Moving on to the report for the MAC activities, the MAC Board of Directors met on October 30th, and at this meeting, the MAC Board of Directors approved the MAC legislative initiatives for the 2025 General Assembly. We will be preparing talking points for the board members, highlighting the key issues of priorities as we get closer to the start of the legislative session. And I ask you to please save the date for the annual MAC Trustees Leadership Conference, which will be held Monday, January 27th at 3:00 p.m. at the Governor Calvert House in Annapolis. And we will also be sharing more information about the specifics of them as we get closer. And that, Madam Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Is there any new business for the board? Trustee Moore.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I like to do this every year. As we come up on the holiday season, I can pretty much bet, safely say that no one in this room is gonna go hungry for Thanksgiving or the holidays or any time in between. But we may have students who will run into that issue. So for those of you who don't know, I know the college does, but maybe new trustees, we do have a food bank here for our students. It's really easy to do. You just, we can get a link, send to us. You go on Amazon, you say this, this, and this, hit send, and it's delivered right here. You don't have to do anything else but spend a little money. So another way we can support our students, food insecurity is a big deal for me. It's one of the things I'm passionate about because I don't believe- It's one of the things I'm passionate about because I don't believe students can learn if they're hungry. So I just wanted to say that one last thing. Thank you, Dr. Chen.
Thank you. Any other new business? As a reminder, the next public session board meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th. I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and the meeting is adjourned.